Good morning. Everyone, please stand for the pledge. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Entertain a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes of last meeting.
Motion.
Second question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opportunities for the public to address the board agenda items only.
Joan Hodawana, it's Granton. With regard to Resolution 23-0070, Appointments to the Lackawanna County Literacy Committee, I want to thank you for including as one of your nominations Sandy Longo. Sandy is the Director of the Abington Community Library, and she has been for some years. She not only holds a Master's in Library and Information Science, but she has a Master's in Reading Education. And I can't think of anyone more qualified than her, a librarian with that kind of background, to be on your committee, so good choice. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a challenge to narrow it down to some of those things, but it worked out well. Ms. Hart has been a spearhead of that along with Sandy Lamont, and we want to thank you for that. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Proclamation presentation, 230056.
So. Whereas colon and rectal cancers are one of the most frequently diagnosed cancers in northeastern Pennsylvania, with incidence and mortality rates in some areas much as 13% higher than the U.S. average. And whereas about 75% of new cases of colon and rectal cancers occur in patients of average risk, and approximately 525 new cases are diagnosed. Nearly 200 patients die from colon cancer each year in the counties of Lackawanna, Luzerne, Monroe, Pike, Susquehanna, Wayne, and Wyoming counties combined. And whereas the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute has been easing the burden of cancer in northeastern Pennsylvania for over 30 years through community and patient services, hospital and practice support services, and cancer surveillance programs specifically designed to meet unique needs of our region. And whereas on Thursday, March 30th, 2023, the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute will sponsor the 20th Annual Casual, which stands for Colon Cancer Awareness Saves Unlimited Adult Lives Day. Whereas Casual Day was established by the family of Helen Phillips, who fought a courageous battle against colon cancer and died in the summer of 2002. Now therefore, we, Jerry Notariani, Debbie Dominic, and myself, Chris Schirmack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize March as Colorectal Cancer Month, and urge residents to be screened for early detection of colon cancer and participate with the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute in its colon cancer awareness efforts, and proclaim March 30th, 2023, as Casual Day in Lackawanna County.
Thank you. And here to speak on that is Amanda Marka-Johnny. Amanda?
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us. My name is Amanda Marka-Johnny, and I am the Community Relations Coordinator at the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute. I am the staff contact for this particular educational and awareness campaign. And as the Commissioners said, this really started with a brother and sister whose mother was diagnosed with late-stage colon cancer and had never been screened. So our message to everyone in all of the counties is to talk to your healthcare provider and have a casual conversation about early detection and screening for this particular type of cancer. If anyone needs resources, the Cancer Institute is a local information and referral organization. We field about 200 calls related to anything in a cancer experience. You know, you can call our office, 570-904-8808, and our website is cancer NEPA.org. And we're just excited that this campaign is in its 20th year. It keeps growing each year. You know, we want to thank the county for participating in it, all of our sponsors, and all of our community members. This really feeds back into local programming that the Cancer Institute is doing and helping our neighbors and community members. So thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Come on up, we'll have a proclamation for you. There's Rick. There's Rick.
Okay. Ordinance, second reading, 230055.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ordinance 285 of the Board of County Commissioners Creating and Establishing the Lackawanna County Opioid Settlement Committee, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County believe it is in the best interest of the residents of Lackawanna County to establish the Opioid Settlement Fund Committee. And whereas the Board of Commissioners desire to plan for the Opioid Settlement Fund review current substance use disorder services in the county to increase access to substance use disorder services in the county, and plan for additional substance use disorders in Lackawanna County. Fatal and non-fatal opioid overdoses continue in the county, and substance use disorder prevalence remains high among all populations. Counties are on the front line of the opioid epidemic, providing public services to save lives and support recovery. Of the hundreds of lawsuits between governments and opioid manufacturers, distributors, and retailers, too, have reached settlements with a nationwide impact, the $26 billion settlement with Johnson &amp; Johnson, McKesson, AmerisourceBergen, and Cardinal Health, and the $6 billion settlement with Purdue Farm. Both of these settlements require that the majority of the settlement funds go towards future opioid abatement and provide an extensive list of approved uses in a document referred to as Exhibit E attached here, too. The Opioid Settlement Fund Committee seeks to establish programs to address these issues. The purpose of this ordinance is to create the Lackawanna County Opioid Fund Settlement Committee, whose goal is to ensure that Lackawanna County is planful in the spending of the opioid settlement dollars over the next 18 years, or as long as the county receives the money. Lackawanna County is set to receive approximately $9.7 million over the next 18 years. This money will be used to expand substance abuse disorder services for residents in the county. The Committee will hold public meetings and convene with appropriate stakeholders to discuss and create plans for advancing substance use disorder services in the county. The Committee will receive feedback and input from the community on barriers to care and community needs, and will create programs and expand services based on that input. The Committee shall issue an annual public report to the Board of Commissioners on its programs, progress, and recommendations. The Committee shall be comprised of 11 members, who shall be appointed by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County. The Committee shall consist of three county Commissioners or their designees, one of which shall serve as the Chair of the Board, the President, Judge, or their designee, the Director of Drug and Alcohol, the Director of Health and Human Services, the District Attorney, or their designee, Chief Public Defender, or their designee, a Recovery Advocate, the Chief Financial Officer, and the Lackawanna County Chief Solicitor. The County Commissioners or their designees, along with the President, Judge, or their designee, and the District Attorney, or their designee, shall serve until the end of their term of office. The Director of Drug and Alcohol, Director of Health and Human Services, Chief Public Defender, or their designee, Chief Financial Officer, Chief County Solicitor, shall serve as long as they hold the position with the county, or they are replaced by the Board of Commissioners. The Committee member that is a Recovery Advocate shall initially be appointed to a two-year term. Upon expiration of the initial appointed terms, all terms for Committee members shall be for a period of four years. Members of the Committee shall continue to serve until their successors have been appointed and qualified. Members of the Committee shall serve without compensation. The Committee shall hold regular public meetings and shall allow for public comment on matters under deliberation at each subject such public meeting. All meetings of the Committee shall comply with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. The Committee shall have the following duties: to conduct regular public meetings to gain input and information relevant to the promotion, education, prevention, and treatment of substance use disorders and uses of the opioid settlement funds in Lackawanna County; assess the feasibility of establishing programs to promote and support education, prevention, and treatment of substance abuse disorders; to identify and engage with potential stakeholders and nonprofit organizations to partner with in organizing, planning, and conducting programs, and providing educational materials for children and adults throughout Lackawanna County; to make application directly or indirectly for any federal, state, county, or municipal government, or agency, or any other source, whether public or private, for grants, gifts, guarantees, or other aid or financial assistance in furtherance of the Opioid Settlement Fund, Committee's public purpose. This ordinance shall become effective upon adoption. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, that was the second reading, so we're going to take a vote on this. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Barb, want to talk about it?
Sure. I, excuse me, I appreciate the work that you all have done on the creation of this committee. I think it will be really important for us moving forward with the administration of the opioid settlement money. As Chief Jeffers mentioned, we're receiving approximately $9.7 million. We'll likely receive some additional money as additional settlements come through, so this will be the first step in managing that money. Happy to answer any questions anyone has, but I appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add as well? There was a recent settlement relative to the retailers, and that settlement paperwork is literally in the process of being executed now. So as soon as that is executed, that's an additional $20 billion that's going to be put out nationally across all the states, and it'll be all prorated and broken down, just as the initial proceeds were. So to Barb's point, that's some of the additional monies that'll be coming in, that'll go into that fund in addition to the $9.7 million or so that's already allocated from the initial settlement with the big three distributors.
That's great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Resolution 230071. Approving Current Payables.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund, numbers 353-692-354-096, inclusive totaling $1,696,369.94. Lackawanna County's electric fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County on March 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I believe everyone's had an opportunity to review the payables. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230057.
Approving professional service agreements for the Coroner's Office. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the professional service agreements on behalf of the county's Coroner's Office with Northern Tier Research, Forensic Associates of NEPA, CFS Forensic Services LLC, and Lackawanna County X-Ray LLC. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the county's coroner, Mr. Tim Rowland.
Mr. Rowland?
How you doing? Do you want to do them individually?
You can explain them individually, but it's all under one resolution.
So Northern Tier Associates is our current provider for forensic laboratory testing. They, we've been using them as long as I've been there. They're located on the second floor of our forensic center in Dunmore. It makes it very manageable to run specimens upstairs, sign them in, chain of custody, all those things, and the prices are comparable.
Within guidelines?
Within, yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Rowland? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
The second, do you want me to? I'll do them all, right?
Right.
Yeah. The second contract is for CSF Forensics, which is Dr. Charles Seibert, who came to our area from the New Jersey Medical Examiner System. He is a resident of Pike County and is filled in, is actually doing the majority of the cases. Dr. Gary Ross, who is also, will be the next contract that I bring up. He is kind of working himself into retirement, travels throughout the winter. Dr. Seibert has filled in, filled in that role, and a very good opportunity for us to have him come here.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, entertain a motion to approve that contract?
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
The last one is Forensic Associates, which is Dr. Gary Ross, who has been the forensic pathologist for our system and many other counties around for, since 2000, 2000 or even earlier. He's been here forever. It's the same thing, the prices are the same.
Okay.
These are all professional service contracts.
Anyone have any questions?
No.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And the last one is Lackawanna County Mobile X-Ray, which are located across the parking lot from us. Occasionally, we do require radiographic services, and they are a mobile company. They come over and take care of whatever we need.
All right, great. Good job, Mr. Rowland. Thank you. Anyone have any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Have a good day. Resolution 230058.
Entering into an intergovernmental agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Corrections, as attached here, too. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Warden of the County Prison, Mr. Tim Battie.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This is a pretty straightforward intergovernmental agreement between Lackawanna County and the Department of Corrections. It is, there's no fee associated with it, and we benefit from it by being able to tap into the expertise of the officials from the Department of Corrections for a variety of events, which are spelled out on page one of that agreement, under the purpose. If anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Nothing? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 230059.
Entering into an engagement letter, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the financial advisory services to PFM Financial Advisors LLC, and does hereby enter into an engagement letter of services pending review of an agreement by the county solicitors. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the county's Chief Financial Officer, Mr. David Bolzoni.
Good morning, gentlemen. Ms. Hart, the purpose of the request was twofold: retain the services of a financial advisor under formal contract, specifically stating the services provided and cost, also to retain the services of a financial advisor who can take a broad-based approach to delivering those services. Regarding the second stipulation, I was really seeking to obtain more information on financial best practices, as well as creative advisory services for any prospective transactions that are contemplated by the county. Two proposals were received from PFM and NW Financial. Both are excellent firms. PFM is recommended following a review by a committee of three, which included myself, based on a ranking scale that we incorporated within the request for proposal. Some noteworthy components of the response by PFM: PFM claims is part of their client base 20 of the 67 counties in Pennsylvania. PFM also serves as advisor to 35 counties located throughout the country. The advisory group has a combined experience of over 100 years, and in each of the past 28 years, PFM has been ranked as the number-one financial advisor in the country. The Committee recommends the approval.
Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, resolution 230060.
Entering into a purchasing cooperative agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a national purchasing cooperative agreement with BuyBoard. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Once again, here is Mr. Bolzoni.
Regarding the purchasing cooperative, BuyBoard is a national purchasing cooperative created to serve local government. Its origin was in the state of Texas, and it was created initially to serve public school districts. There isn't a cost to be a member of the cooperative. It's similar in construction to Co-Stars, which is an organization that we're all familiar with, and based on information provided by the cooperative, is also compliant in Pennsylvania. Its value is to provide a broader number of opportunities to acquire equipment and services that have already been pre-bid, and it could, in theory, lower the county's costs to acquire those services and equipment.
Good job, thank you. Anyone questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230061.
Entering into an amendment, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into an amendment to an agreement of sale and purchase of tax claims by and between the county and the Redevelopment Authority of Lackawanna County. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is C. F. Bolzoni.
Hey, regarding the amended agreement of sale, the agreement of sale that was originally approved by the Board of Commissioners was signed in conjunction with the sale of tax claims to the Redevelopment Authority, and it was approved and signed prior to the final approval by the bank, which is actually going to finance the purchase of those claims, that bank being Fidelity Bank. Fidelity Bank, upon review, had some questions and comments, and recommended some modifications, which were relatively minor in scope, mostly clarification of the sale of tax claims for years three and prior. As it's a relatively unique transaction, they were looking for some additional language within the agreement of sale. It was thoroughly reviewed, the language was certainly acceptable, and we would recommend approval of the amended agreement of sale.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Bolzoni. Resolution 230062.
Approving the Sheriff's Collective Bargaining Agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the collective bargaining agreement between the county and the Deputy Sheriff's Association to commence January 1st, 2023, and expire December 31st, 2026. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Head of Human Resources, Ms. Joanne Decker.
Good morning. We finally wrapped up the last of our negotiations, so we're just here to seek approval for the collective bargain agreement for the Sheriff's Union. It will be effective January 1st of 2023, running through December 31st, 2026.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 230063.
Approving the Public Defender's Collective Bargain Agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the collective bargaining agreement between the county and the public defenders to commence January 1st, 2023, and expire December 31st, 2026. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here once again is Ms. Decker.
Once again, we've concluded the negotiations, and we're just looking approval for the collective bargain agreement for the Public Defenders Union, starting January 1st, 2023, expiring December 31st, 2026.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230064.
Approving the OYFS Collective Bargain Agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the memorandum of understanding for the new collective bargaining agreement between the county and the Office of Youth and Family Services to commence January 1st, 2023, and expire December 31st, 2026. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Finally, once again, here is Ms. Decker.
The last of the contracts you'll see me for, so we're looking once again, January 1st, 2023, running through December 31st, 2026.
That's the last of the contracts?
That is the last of the seven unions.
Everything should be fine going forward.
For a few years, yeah.
For a few years.
Yeah.
Beautiful, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution 230065.
Approving the Area Agency on Aging Amendments, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Area Agency on Aging Amendments with the Greenhouse Project and subcontractor Howard McIntosh, with agreements to expire June 30th, 2023. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Acting Director of the AAA, Minister Sarah McDonald.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here today seeking approval to amend two Area Agency on Aging contracts. The first is through the Greenhouse Project, which provides satellite senior center activities to include older active, older adult programming. This $20,000 program has been budgeted in our 2022-2023 Senior Center Activity Budget. It will offer 32 programs, including 65 individual events, which will be free to individuals 60 and older, who are registered at one of our four healthy aging campuses. Do you guys have any questions?
Nope. Okay. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
The second one is for our outreach worker, Howard McIntosh. We are looking to increase the hours of outreach services to eligible individuals 60 years and older residing in Lackawanna County, and are requesting to amend the existing contract not to exceed $16,000 to include hourly rate, mileage, and supplies. Howard McIntosh has been the agency's outreach subcontractor since 2018. He provides assistance to older adults throughout the county with tasks such as completing applications for housing, rent rebates, PACE, LIHEP, and other energy assistance programs, PA 600 forms for SNAP, medical assistance, and waiver programs. In addition, he visits senior centers and low-income community living sites to educate consumers on services offered through our agency. Do you guys have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230069.
Establishing the Lackawanna County Combat Inflation Business Grant, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby established the Lackawanna County Combat Inflation Business Grant for local businesses in Lackawanna County with the American Rescue Plan Act funds. This grant will aid small businesses to mitigate financial hardship resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. The intent of this grant is to assist small businesses with monetary relief, to help combat the effects of inflation, provide resources for expansion, and to invest in workforce initiatives. This grant will fund Lackawanna County businesses who were negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the American Rescue Plan. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby direct the Director of Planning and Economic Development to sign and authorize all documents related to this grant program. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. This resolution states that the county is authorizing the creation of the Lackawanna County Combat Inflation Business Grant. Businesses are the backbone of our nation's economy, and many are facing potentially devastating economic pressure because of inflation due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This program will assist with a one-time $5,000 grant to help combat the effects of inflation, provide resources for expansion, or to invest in workforce initiatives. You can go to www.lackawannacounty.org, or the Lackawanna County Planning and Economic Development Facebook page to get more information on the grant.
Thank you.
Great.
Good job.
How many businesses do you have that you, can you do this time?
At this point, we have 100 budgeted. We can reevaluate once we see the need.
That's great.
Great. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230072.
Accepting the quote for installation from Vortex. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the quote from Vortex, a Pennsylvania Co-Stars vendor, to provide equipment and the installation of a splash pad at the McDade Park Cool Complex. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution is amending an agreement with Vortex, who is a Co-Stars vendor, to provide installation of the splash pad at McDade Park, in addition to the equipment that we purchased from them last year.
Anyone have any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve?
A motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution 230073.
Authorizing a grant submission, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorize the Office of Environmental Sustainability to submit a grant to the Lackawanna Heritage Valley for a Lackawanna County Municipal Electronics Recycling Event. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is Ms. Nicole Shapiro.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
We are applying for the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Partnership Grant for $5,000, so we can help put more money into our municipal electronics recycling grant, so with that we could potentially fund up to 12 events for the next year for municipal recycling of electronics. You know, with the main goal of this program and why we're applying for this grant is to help prevent illegal dumping of electronics. You know, when they're near our waterways and our woods, they could leach heavy metals into the soil and into the water, so we want to try to get these things to happen more regularly, so that people have an outlet to safely get rid of or recycle their devices.
Great job, Nicole.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230070.
Sir, appointments to the Lackawanna County Literacy Committee, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Literacy Committee: Sandra A. Longo, 914 Washington Street Troop. It's a two-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2024. Lynn Shadlock, 515 Summit Avenue, Clark Summit. Also a two-year term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2024. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions about these appointments, you can ask Deputy Chief Hart. I think these are final two appointments to the board, right?
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Resolution 230066.
Entering into agreement with Johnson Controls, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with Johnson Controls for the Lackawanna County Courthouse Fire Alarm, CCTV, access control, sprinkler, and fire pump inspections to commence immediately and expire February 28th, 2025. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Here to speak upon that is our Director of Maintenance, Mr. Mark Duer.
Good morning, commissioners. This is just the annual fire alarm inspections for our fire alarm, CCTV, the access control, our what sprinkler systems in the fire pump inspections at the Lackawanna County Courthouse. This is an annual inspection, and the cost is $39,879.31, and when Mr. Jeffers said February 28th, 2025.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230067.
Entering into an agreement with Otis Elevator, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with Otis Elevator for the Lackawanna County Courthouse and county prison elevators to commence immediately and expire February 2024. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 1st, 2023. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Duer.
This is just an annual contract for both buildings that come to my attention for payment. It's $11,952.52. It's a sole source with all these Johnson Controls, and you'll see Otis Elevator and Valley Forge Power Systems. It's also a source, there's nothing, it's their equipment, and when they repair it, they maintain it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion. Make a motion to accept the quote from Valley Forge Power Systems, Inc., for the maintenance of UPS and battery backup.
This is the UPS battery backup for all the computers in Lackawanna County. The battery backup is up here on the fifth floor. It's a Mitsubishi unit, so this is the annual maintenance for that, and also the Liebert system on the sixth floor, which take care of our radio waves that bounce off each building and up to the park. That cost is $7,980, and that's another sole source.
Okay, I've made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hoda wanted Scranton. The Friends of the Scranton Public Library are currently conducting a book sale at the marketplace at Steamtown Mall on the second floor. It'll run through Sunday. Books are paperback, hardcover, children's books, adult books, young adult. We also sell audiobooks, DVDs, CDs, and this time we have some vinyl records. I think they're 78s, so for those of us old enough to know what a vinyl record is, it's a great bargain. On Saturday and Sunday, if you come in and buy one of our tote bags for $5, everything you stuff in it is free. Also, on Sundays only, from 12 to 3, if you're a teacher or you work for a nonprofit, you can take anything for free, okay, because it helps us not to have to box them up again and store them in Barb's garage. So, it's a win-win for the public and for the library itself. Now, what do we do with the money? Mine is 6% for the taxman. The money supports our children's programming for the county library system. For example, every second Sunday of the month, every month, a second Sunday, the Friends will sponsor an event at the children's library. This month, on March 12th, at 2:00 PM, we have a program they're running with the Electric City Aquarium and Reptile Den, where they're going to bring in some reptiles. The kids absolutely love it, they go bonkers, okay? It's wonderful, and they'll learn about predatory reptiles, how they hunt, how they capture prey, how to have live reptiles, and so on and so forth. And then the library, of course, puts out age-appropriate books, and for many children, it's their first introduction to the library system. This is your county children's library, so please, if you've got children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, it's a wonderful thing to do the day after the St. Patrick's Day Parade. It's 2:00 PM on March 12th, 520 Vine Street, right across the street from Lackawanna College. The only thing we ask is that you do call the library, just to let us know you're coming. You need to register. The event is free, but we need to know how many people are coming, and the number is 570-348-3000, extension 3015. And we do this every month, a different program, so please, come and make use of a county asset. Thank you.
Great job, Joan. Anyone else? Okay, Commissioner Schermak?
Nope. Thank you, Joan, for bringing that to our attention.